To order on February 26, 2019. Welcome, everyone. I'm really excited that there is still daylight outside of those windows. All right, we're going to get started with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present.
And Commissioner Abraham, would you lead us in the invocation tonight?
I will.
Thank you. Please stand.
Father, we thank you so much for not raining. It's been a challenge for us and our neighbors. Father, you won't put more on us than we can bear. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. In these things we ask you in Shiloh's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Please say standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our life. Thank you very much. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have one deletion. It's going to be the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant Application Be Consent Agenda, letter "I." That'll be a deletion.
Thank you very much. All right, to get us started tonight, we're going to hear from Mr. Richard Roof and the Barclay Regional Airport.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
Sun is shining until Thursday or Friday at least. I left you some packets of information, and I will briefly review that. I want to cover our audit, which I'm required to present to you. The Barclay Regional Airport Authority Board appreciates the support that the city's given the facility. It's important. The facility generates $43 million a year in economic benefits into the surrounding region. We have about a 17-person staff, and we have a bunch of functions: administrative, fire and rescue, airside maintenance, landside maintenance, marketing and public relations, and law enforcement. And we cover all of that with the 17 people. So we have a variety of hats issued to everyone when they come onboard. The audit that you have been given a copy of presents fairly in all material aspects: the financial condition of the Airport Authority for the audit period of fiscal year 2018. We have no discrepancies in it. It was a clean audit, I'm pleased to report to you. Operating revenues increased about 4% during the year, while expenses increased about 1.8%, and that includes depreciation and maintenance numbers as well. I think, as most of you know, on January 7th, we had a significant event in that SkyWest inaugurated their three-flight schedule on Mondays through Fridays, with two flights remaining on weekends. That's beginning to pick up a bit. Weather has not been kind to us the last month and a half, even worse than last year, which I thought was pretty well the pits. We have, with those flights, they all serve Chicago O'Hare, which has been declared the nation's best and most connected hub. So we'll cover one of those points here very shortly. Due to weather primarily of last January and February, we weren't able to quite catch up to the previous year in 2017. We were down about .63%, so it's not even 1%. It came in very good in the summer months and in the fall, but we couldn't quite make up for those ice days. I kind of long for the snow days myself. I can handle that a lot easier than I can the ice. There are some interesting factoids here, that 10% of our passengers now utilize that service for local travel between Paducah and Chicago, and it's never been like that before. And we also have about 10% of our ticketed passengers now are international, which is a pretty high number. I think probably what you might find interesting, if you go to this particular stapled four-sheet handout, if you go to the second page on that, in terms of international, and these are fairly good numbers, Tokyo is our number one. That can be done with only one plane change in Chicago out of Paducah, Cancun, Mexico, London, Mexico City, Frankfurt, Hong Kong, Vancouver, Beijing, Puerto Vallavarta, and Munich, and these are all in our top 10 for international tickets. And as I mentioned, Chicago's number one for the travel here, followed by Denver, Orlando, Minneapolis, Las Vegas, Seattle, Washington DC, Dallas, Houston, and Newark. So that's where our people are pretty well going, and they are scattered throughout the country as well as overseas. So that's really interesting. We have projects set up for 2019. Some are in the basic design process, others are under consideration to be included. Hopefully, we'll be able to get FAA grants for all of these, which should be about at the 90% level, but we'll still be stuck with about 10%. We're in the middle of a master plan update for the airport. It hasn't been done for about 18 years, so we're going back and update all the numbers and stats, and I'll share that with you when that finally gets FAA approval, which will probably be about six or seven months down the road. We will have a project to clear obstructions in our runway approach zones. These are primarily trees. We're going to correct a runway safety area drainage issue. We also have, that's in the grass on the side of the runways. We're going to upgrade our high-intensity runway lights on the primary runway with LED fixtures. We've already done about 75% of our taxiway lights with LED fixtures, and it's worked out quite well. And they're in the process of designing a sewer line extension in conjunction with JSA to where the airport will no longer have to operate its own package treatment plant. So these are things that we're all looking forward to in this year, and no doubt there'll be others that will crop up. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Any questions? No?
All right, then you got a lot of information.
Good job. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
I really appreciate what you do, Richard. All right, we're going to move into items for business. Let's see. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member's so requests. Anyone have anything they need to remove?
I do.
Okay.
Item C.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, if you, if I can ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Minutes for the February 12, 2019, City Commission meeting. Reappointment of Thomas Whitmore to the Paducah Area Transit System Board. This term shall expire June 30, 2022. Personnel actions: A municipal order accepting the bid of Kenny's Lawn Service and More for grounds maintenance for city-owned properties in an amount of $14.49 per lot promoting and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order accepting the bid of Linwood Motors for sale to the city of eight police pursuit-rated SUVs in an amount of $303,080, with option to purchase two additional SUVs at the unit bid price before June 30, 2019, for use by the Paducah Police Department and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order accepting the bid of Stringfellow for sale to the city of one new diesel dump truck with snowplow and salt spreader in an amount of $133,885 for use by the Paducah Engineering Public Works Department, Street Division, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order authorizing the application for a Kentucky Department for Libraries and Archives grant through the Kentucky Local Records Branch for the city clerk's office to be used to digitize and convert to microfilm permanent records, including ordinance books 6 through 18 and minutes from 1924 to 1969. A municipal order authorizing and directing the Finance Director to transfer funds from the Commission Reserve Fund to the Kresge Demolition Project account in an amount of $600,000 for emergency demolition of the Kresge Building.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Lindsay, can I ask you to put the item C on the table, please?
Appointment of Sarah Holland to the Board of Ethics to replace Jill Gott-Rye, whose term has expired. This term shall expire February 10, 2022.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Abraham?
I'm ready to vote.
Oh, you wanted to vote separately?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Does anyone else need a discussion before we vote? No? Okay, please call roll.
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
All right, I have the resolution in my paperwork here. I have two resolutions. Okay. I move that a resolution entitled a resolution upholding the partnership between the city of Paducah and the county of McCracken to pursue and support a tax increment financing district in the downtown Riverfront development area be adopted.
Second.
Any discussion about this?
Let's go with...
I know it. I heard the county voted on it last night, so we're ready to move ahead. And if you'll call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
All right, I'm trying to keep up with the agenda and read these resolutions at the same time. All right, here we go. I move that a resolution entitled a resolution authorizing the city assistant public works director to execute documents for and on behalf of the city of Paducah to apply for financial assistance through the Federal Emergency Management Agency related to the 2019 flood be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. I know, we don't have a protocol for that. We don't have a protocol for that.
Excuse me. Mayor Commission, this is something that we put in place. Chris Yarber, our Assistant Public Works Director, does an outstanding job in this area as far as collecting and making recovery of those finances that we expend early on, and we've done a great job of recovering those monies. So Chris is pretty much an expert at this, so we look forward to serving for the city in this area again.
Thank you very much. This is very important for us. We know Chris will do a good job. Anyone else have any questions or comments they want to make? We'll vote. All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving, an agreement for demolition services with Danny Cope &amp; Sons Escavating LLC in the amount of $573,000 for emergency demolition services of the Kresge Building located at 316 and 318 and 320 Broadway, ratifying the city manager's declaration of an emergency and execution of said agreement and declaring an emergency to exist. This ordinance is summarized as follows. In the, in this emergency ordinance, the city of Paducah approves a contract of Danny Cope &amp; Sons Escavating for the demolition of the Kresge Building in the total amount of $573,000 and ratifies the city manager's execution of the contract and declaration of emergency.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions tonight? Did you want to make any statements?
Yeah, sure, Madam Mayor. Basically, what this is, is seeking Board of Commissioners' action to ratify my declaration of emergency and also the ratification of the agreement pursuant to the Kentucky revised statutes and the municipal code. I do have the authority to declare the emergency and do the emergency agreement. However, due to the Attorney General's opinion, they require Board of Commissioners' ratification on both.
I think you did the right thing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Last week was a busy week.
Yes.
Sorry, you were faced with that at the same time as the flooding, but thank you for making the decision you did. I think it was for the protection of definitely the buildings around it and pedestrians and everything going on downtown, so thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely.
I don't think we had any choice.
That's right. All right, ready, call roll? All right, thank you.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner McElroy, do you have a motion?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving an agreement between the city of Paducah and Integrated Visualization Systems Incorporated, Doing Business As Innovations Branding House, for website videos, design of printed materials, and social media content related to the city's strategic plan initiatives in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for fiscal year 2019 and $36,000 for fiscal year 2020, and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the city of Paducah does hereby approve an agreement with Innovations Branding House in an amount not to exceed $20,000 in 2019 and $36,000 in 2020 for professional services related to branding and community engagement for the city's strategic plan.
Second.
Any discussion? No? We saw the presentation last week, or last meeting.
Yeah, I have, real quick, I, presentation was good. The young lady did a great job. I met with city manager and assistant city manager talking about this particular item and some others. And the conversation went as follows. We have, and I brought this up, we have a new system that we are currently implementing, the Munis system. And it has a lot of bells and whistles on it when we figure out how that works. One of the examples the young lady used here last week was, I think it was, I think she used an example of a street or pothole, trying to figure out when you're going to get to my neighborhood, trying to figure out when that work order goes in. But that system that we have, when we figure it out, you'll be able to do that. You can take a picture of it, track the work order, find out where it is. Those are the type of things that I get asked about a lot, about streets. Now, I'm sure there are some other folks in town. I know we did. We sent out a few hundred surveys on some other issues. But I left that meeting, and so I went back and I watched the meeting last week. And we have a lot of capable people here as staff members, from our public information officer to our IT people. And for what we want to communicate to our citizenry, I'm just thinking, can't we do that without spending the amount of money that we're talking about spending, given the climate of our finances? And we're trying to, you know, we're trying to squeeze every penny. So that was my concern, and I voiced those concerns to the city manager, and he talked about just, you know, we have a big house, everybody's busy, just focusing in on that could be somewhat challenging to our staff. But I just don't see spending that money for that particular plan there, when I think we could get our message across. We talked about branding. Who are we? What do we do? We do a lot of things, and if folks want to know what we're doing with what we're doing currently, and the capabilities of us getting that message out even better when we get our unit up, I think would suffice, in my opinion, this right here. So I said that to say that I would vote no on that.
Any other comments, discussion you'd like to have? Anyone? No?
The only thing I would say is I talked with some of the people from Paducah Economic Development, and they talked a lot about their learning more about what we need to do for growth and how important branding is. Even signage in a city can make such a difference as its attractiveness to new business and people like that. And I just think that maybe we need to take that step and try to look as sharp as we possibly can, and that follows over into the world of the media, where people first meet your city is often online. I know young people, they don't come here first, they already figured out where their kids are going to school, where they're going to church, and what neighborhoods they're looking at before they ever get in town. So I think, I understand what you're saying about the pothole thing. I think we could, that's something we definitely can do internally, but if we're going to have really sharp-looking video and media that's going to impress people and is going to be competitive, it's probably going to have to go outside these walls. That's just my opinion.
You know, one of the inspirations, I think, that Innovations looked to, to think about what they would even do when they were asked the question, how would you communicate the city's strategic plan message, was they went and looked at other cities. And several examples I remember seeing of other cities who are investing in that part of this, that there are all these great things happening inside of city government, and it's difficult for one person, our PIO, to tell that message in a way that our citizens can engage with. And so I agree with you. I think that putting out the message that this is a dynamic city, that we have a lot going on and a lot of things happening, can only be beneficial. You know, you mentioned the financial situation, and I recently said this in an email, that I firmly believe we have to take the three-legged stool approach to this pension problem. We have to think of how to be more efficient with our spending, how to consider creative ways of bringing in more funds to the city, and we also have to think about growth. We have to have a growth mindset in this time. We have to. If we don't, we will not survive this. I firmly believe that. And part of this is part of that growth mentality. It's to say, we want our citizens to be more engaged? We all said from day one that that strategic plan was too big for the city government to do, so we have to have citizen engagement. And let's talk about the pothole example for a second, because the pothole example, from my understanding, maybe Jim can clear this up, that example of using Munis or a system to collect data about potholes was just an example of a social media post. Nowhere in the contract with Innovations are they going to be doing work to collect data about potholes?
No.
Okay. So there is a piece of the strategic plan that talks about leveraging Munis to do that. I don't remember what we called it in the strategic plan. It's something about community input where we can do that. Innovations will be communicating about us accomplishing that and then pushing it out to the community, say, please work, please use our app, please download the app, whatever we come up with from Munis, please make sure you use this, because the last thing we want to do is spend time and resources developing what you're talking about out, and then no one uses it. And that's common. That's definitely common in technology. So I think having Innovations to push that back out to the community and say, this is time, use it, is a very valuable use of our resources. We are asking a local company to do something for us that we would have to hire an entire team to do. So we are actually getting a really good bang for our buck in the marketing world, because that, what you're talking about, that's about a full-time person's salary, I would say, but one person couldn't do everything that they're about to do for us. It takes an entire team to do that. And I think that this city government is going to learn a lot from seeing what it means to communicate in that way, and then maybe one day, we really can then build the right team internally to implement the things. But we don't know what we don't know at this point, and I think it's worth the experiment. So...
Well, just to follow up, we have partners here in the city that continually market our city. Visitors Bureau, they're always out there. We have a historic art district. These guys are, everybody knows that that's part of who we are. So we don't have to do everything. We have other partners out there, and they do a great job. We commend them on them all the time when they come by, from the Quilt Museum to the Market House. There's a lot of different partners here, and they do a great job. So I just, I just think that as city government, there are certain things that we are responsible for, don't get me wrong, but there are other things that we, I think we all would acknowledge that the agencies that I just mentioned, they do a great job, and that's all going toward marketing the city that we live in.
Well, just to be clear, again, if you read the contract with Innovations, this is not about duplicating a CVB job. This is about communicating the strategic plan that the city government, that we have adopted at the city government, to tell our citizens, not to tell the world, to tell our citizens what we are doing and what that strategic plan is meant to do. Nowhere in the contract does it say that they will be going and selling our community to the world. I think Commissioner McElroy's point is, when young people look to cities, they Google them, and what they find online, regardless if they're the target audience or not, matters. And so when you imagine that Innovations is doing the work to say to our local community, here's the plan, be a part of it, here's how you're going to engage, and some 19-year-old, 22-year-old is at UK right now about to graduate college, and he or she Googles Paducah and sees, wow, they've got a lot going on in that city. That government's doing some great things. They're implementing neighborhood programs, I mean, all the things that are in that strategic plan. That, to me, is the goal, and in the contract, that is what is stated as the mission. So we can disagree, and that's okay, but it's a good conversation to have.
I think it's a small investment, really, considering the outcome. You talked about young professionals. One of our goals for, as a community, is to recruit more people here, and one of this, this is one of the best ways to do that. We have a lot of job opens, openings in this community that we really still need to fill. And so I think this is one way to help recruit people to come back here if they'll see that. So I look at it, I mean, maybe it's not to market to the world, but it is a way that people will be able to see a more, a city that they might want to come home to or they might want to locate to, and we need them. Yeah.
I think it's important to note, too, that it is a contract that does have a three-day out, you know, so basically, we're going to continue to monitor their effectiveness and are they accomplishing what we want them to accomplish? Is this actually evolving in the direction we see it evolving? Is it being effective for the city? And then if need be, we'll terminate services, but I think it's exciting. I think it's going to, it's going to challenge our team to realize that we're really putting a high priority on those win initiatives and getting those out there, making sure that we're public-facing, engaging the community, you know, customer-centric, and saying, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're behind, and here's what we're doing, and then trying to get them, you know, inclusive in that and bring them as part of that. But doing the ways where we're marketing to them based upon the areas they see it. You know, where do we get to them? How do we get to them? And that's what kind of we determine through those surveys, which groups do we have to hit, and where do we get to them? Do they, do they read it on the daily newspaper? Are they seeing it on the, you know, WPSD? Are they listening to the radio? Are they seeing it on Twitter, Instagram, you know, Snapchat, Facebook, and making sure it's direct marketing attempts? And as Commissioner Abraham said, I do agree, we do have a good team here. Team Paducah is one of the best, and it's just a capacity issue, like you mentioned. It's basically saying, we have the people, we have the skill sets, but it's just trying to keep up and having that capacity to do it effectively. And working with a company, that's all they do, is this forward-thinking marketing, and that's something a little bit outside the box, and I think it's good for us to get outside the box sometimes.
I would just say that, you know, I can see where this would be a nice thing to have, but there are a lot of other things we can do to recruit jobs, more specifically. But I, to me, it's more of a financing issue. I just don't think, I know it's only up to $20,000, but that's a lot of money when you've got a tight budget, and we've got all these other challenges that are facing us that I just can't support it for that reason.
Anyone else? All right, will you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
All right, city commissioner? You're not a city commissioner, you're a city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few things, just to, number one, I talked about the need to go into executive session tonight to discuss potential litigation, and then also, the second thing I have is just to give a bunch of compliments to the city team. Team Paducah really has shined out there the last 10 to 15 days.
And to you, Jim, for your leadership through some challenging days.
Well, I'll give that over to Rick and his competent staff. You know, they did a really good job out there. They really know what they're doing. They take a lot of pride in what they're doing, and it was a pleasure to be part of the team and see them in action. I just love the fact that when I first came here, that was one of my biggest fears. Well, I get to accomplish it here in, you know, less than eight months, so, you know, one of those things, you just live through your fear and grow. But Michelle told me, when I first got here, we talked about this, and she said, you know, what I've learned the most about being with Team Paducah is when you see them out there working that flood wall and how they collaborate and how they work together as a team and get things done, it's really impressive. And I got to see that firsthand this week. I was very impressed by that. They did a really good job.
They did a really good job. Public Works, all the crews, parks working together, fire working together, you know, police checking in on us as well, you know, the HR down there checking for safety operations, you know, Pam running the information out and getting the message across. It was all hands on deck. It was very impressive. So, I want to say big kudos to the team. We're not out of the woods yet. The water still hasn't got to its highest point, and it's going to be here for a while, but I was very impressed by the efforts. And also, on top of that, can we talk about the partnership with the county? You know, what I've heard about since I've been here is, "Oh, the city doesn't get along with the county." No. And I always said, "I don't see what people are seeing," because I know behind the scenes, we work hard together. And this is just another, you know, testament to that fact, that we work hard together. We partner for one another. We're there for each other when we're needed, and it's just been fantastic all around. So, kudos to the county as well.
Thank you, Jim. Really good words. Comments from commissioners?
I'll follow up on that, that the county approved the resolution, is it resolution?
Resolution.
Last night on the tax increment financing to work with us on that. So, that was great news. And I saw where Rick gave them an update last night on the flooding. Could we ask him to just give us a really brief update here? I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot. I try not to do that, but I do have an event at the Convention Center next week. Just wondering.
There it is.
Is that pressure? Commissioner Wilson, my head's on a swivel right now, or a bobblehead. I'm looking all over the place. With regard to the river, we are 52.8, 52.79, but the forecast calls for that to go to 53 and 1/2 later and start falling around the 1st of March. I don't want to give an exact date on that because we can't give those dates. Part 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, somewhere in that time period. And I've been in daily contact with Michelle at the Convention Center because she has a legitimate concern for that and trying to do that. 52 foot is when we will relieve or be able to occupy that building again. Right now, the temporary measures that we have in place, what we refer to as the Hesco bastions, have water on them in the rear, which means if something were to fail with those Hesco bastions and we have a breach, there'd be no way to stop the water, and we cannot have the building occupied at any time during that because there's no way out. So, once it gets to 52 feet, we will be able to open that front door by the Holiday Inn and resume functions there at the Convention Center. Additionally, as we shared at the EOC today, we will be focusing on businesses that are being impeded by the gates that are in. The order in which they go in is not the order in which they may come out. We'll be looking to put those businesses back. For example, our river industries are being greatly impacted by our gates being in. We'll look to get those out as soon as possible. But for example, some of the gates that don't affect business but may affect people's just visual appearance of the river will be left in at a longer date, and the purpose for this is the river can rebound. We are in the early part of our flooding season, so we, the 2018 flood, we spent $435,000 to accomplish this mission. We do not want to prematurely remove those gates, only to have to, "Oh, oh, the river came back and put them back in." So, we will strategically remove the gates that have impacted businesses. But those that are more of a convenience for tourism or whatever, of visualizing the river, they'll stay in a longer period of time.
So, everything in the Convention Center is closed for right now?
Because the river elevation is such that...
Haven't seen that on some stuff, but, okay. That's what I thought I had heard.
And the purpose for that, that one gate that's closed in front of the Holiday Inn at the entrance, that prevents us from quickly accessing the building for emergency service, and there's only one way out, and that's a Campbell Street. When that gate gets removed, we can resume business at the Convention Center. And if you were to go down there, you're going to see those Hesco bastions that go from the wall to protect the building itself. We'll probably leave that in for a little while, just to let this river get way down before we remove those bastions.
Well, I know everyone's been pulling together down there, too, to provide parking for the Holiday Inn and to help the Convention Center when they were still open. So, thanks again for everything that everybody's doing for that.
As a matter of fact, Friday night, I was getting ready to go home, and we weren't anticipating putting these bastions in. And I happened to drive around back, and the water was actually getting ready to come over. That berm in the back, I called Jim Smith Contracting and said, "Monday's not going to wait. We got to go now." And so, we worked till about 1:00 in the morning, from 3:00, from 3:30 to 1:00 in the morning, we constructed about 900 feet, and actually, the water was on it before we left.
Wow, thank you, Rick.
So, that was, you know, we tried to work around the schedules and stuff, but sometimes you'd be able to pick up the phone and call people when they come help, so...
Also, looking at Metropolis tonight on the news, and even in McCracken County, around Husband Road and a lot of different areas, is really severely impacted. Don't you live out there?
That's my boss on TV, Mo's boss.
Yeah.
The principal, Timon R. Davis, is, it's waters all over his property over in Metropolis, so he's having a rough time.
Well, I'm sorry.
Thankful that we have the flood wall. I'm going to say that. We're very thankful that we have the flood wall, and it's been holding and all the, I know people, there's been some leaking at some of the gates, but that's normal. There's no reason to be concerned about that. So, thank you for, I'm just glad we have it.
Real quick statistic, real quick statistic. Since the flood wall has been here, there's been three occasions that has been 53 feet or better. So, in 65, 69 years, there's only been three events that has been this high. And the first one was in 1950, of which a lot of us weren't here, or maybe so young we don't remember it. And then the next time was in 2011, we had 55 feet. And then this one, yesterday, we had 53.3 again. So, those occurrences in our minds, as far as living in the community, we don't remember those. We remember the small ones because they don't reach out into the Oaks Road and Lyden Road areas as much as these do. These very high ones create some, I guess, emotions, understandably so. But we do everything we can to help everybody.
That makes some real hardships for people.
Exactly, exactly. And we understand that, and we're empathetic and very, our heart goes out to those folks, but we have to do what we have to do.
We learned today at the EOC meeting that there are several efforts that are underway to help victims of the flooding. So, there's a shelter at Heartland Baptist Church. American Cross is getting ready to be able to respond once the water goes back and people have a lot of debris that they need to pick up. And then I know that your office has been collecting maybe some information about others that are trying to do those efforts as well.
Exactly.
I keep seeing people on Facebook post, "How can I help? How can I help?" So, do you have any thoughts or advice on where we can send them when they ask that?
A lot of folks, we can send them to the EOC out at the county garage because they're actually coordinate, Jerome Mansfield is trying to coordinate volunteer groups, like church groups, that can go out and help people and do some things like that as far as coordinating those things.
Okay.
So, we're trying to use those assets that way. Additionally, Steve Chino in our IT department, we actually developed some maps for the county that's online, that if you feel like you're in a flood-prone area, we actually put the 53 and 1/2 foot contour on the ground, so you can actually go online and say, "Okay, I live here at this address. How does that contour affect me?" To give them some fair warning or, you know, preparation. And then also, we had some higher predictions of around 55 feet. Then we also put that boundary on there to give other people as much warning as possible. My office has been contacting Kroger. You recall in 2011, we had this, and we visited with Kroger about six different occasions. It's here, it's here, it's here, it's here. Their corporate people have come in. Their corporate people, I've been in contact with them out of Memphis, and they're doing some things to protect themselves, but I think they're going to be fine. I think they greatly appreciate our going out there and saying, "Oh, thank you. We know what to do now." But they've been doing a great job. So, that's the only business in Paducah that I feel like is threatened. All the rest out that way, I think, will be fine.
Great. Thank you so much for coming up.
Thank you.
Hope you get some rest. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make?
Yeah, I attended the Community Scholars Luncheon at the Junior College on Monday and accepted this on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
What a wonderful program, a wonderful example of public-private partnerships coming together, and they've got 1,126 students that have now been in the program. The numbers are phenomenal in terms of kids that are now able to go to college, even two-year degrees, welding degrees, all kinds of degrees, go on to four-year. We heard testimonies from two students that have had a phenomenal experience and are getting out of school debt-free because of this program. So, it's very impressive, and it was enlightening and good to be there. So, I'll pass that over to Brandon here and put it on her desk.
Excellent. Thank you so much for showing it, for being there on behalf of all of us. Thank you. This is awesome. I like this kind of trophy right there. Great. Anyone else have any comments they want to make?
Just real quick, last Wednesday, last Wednesday, went down to the Fulton County Detention Center and looked at the inmate vocational initiative program, and actually got to talk to a class of eight guys, and they were in a classroom, and they spent the time in the classroom, and then they go out to the shop and weld. And it was awesome because of the excitement that these guys had. One guy, and I quote, he goes, "I didn't even know, I didn't even realize I could learn how to do something like this." And been caught in that circle of addiction and things, and it's very interesting the way they choose the persons to go in this class. It's not just a class you sign up for. The faculty or the staff, they look and they watch individuals, and if they're doing, you know, you can be locked up and still get in trouble. And they select these guys, and once they get in, it's very strict. It's very strict. And one guy said, he goes, "You know, I didn't realize that I had the discipline to keep this opportunity like this, because if you lose your seat, it's tough to get back." But they were excited about it, look forward to learning a skill that they, that they, they're learning how to do something that they didn't realize that they could even learn that. So, then we're excited because trying to get this thing launched here, and it's really good. I'm excited for the guys. And the new jailer, David Knight, Arnie Puckett, Ms. Medlock, all of these guys are excited about doing it. So, all we need now is just a place, and we're looking at that, along with partnering with some of the industry here for materials, which basically is a pile of scrap iron to practice your craft. And so, just wanted to bring you guys up to speed on that.
Did you ever get a chance to talk with the local unions? Because I know they have apprenticeships and training facilities.
Yes, that's on the list.
Okay.
They are going to be approached.
Okay. They got the location, and they got the materials.
Yes.
Excellent. Awesome. Great. All right, anyone else want to make comment? No? All right, we have two comments from the audience tonight. Mr. Randy Beeler is here.
Three minutes.
You know the routine now, don't you?
2011, the men I run with stripped a house out, refinished it for an 80-year-old man who's recently lost his wife after the flood, put his house back to shape, no charge. Breland Ballpark, we did the same thing with Concession Stand to get their field up, no charge. I have talked about this before. This is a lifetime achievement award for community service. Fortunately, I'm one of the leaders, therefore, my name's stuck on it, but it's our men. It's clear our situation's not going to be cured up here. But I spoke to Mr. Cleary out there a while ago, and we both agreed that I'm not racist. 2015, I would have qualified for Paducah, Paducah. Today, I'm a racist. The only way this is going to cure itself, Mr. Cleary, is me and you shake hands right here, sit down and talk about the city's problems and get it cured amongst us. Do you agree? Seize your stand-up, Joseph.
Congratulations, Randy, on your award. Thanks for bringing it.
Will you shake my hand, and me and you talk?
We will talk. I mean, I don't have a problem talking.
All right.
There you go. I mean, like you said, we got a different opinion on this.
That's correct. That's correct. But you're not affected like we are right now.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that. Y'all good with that?
Thank you, Randy.
Don't you think that would be a good thing, if we just sit down and talked?
I think anytime you can sit down and talk is a good idea.
We've been divided over this resolution. The resolution's got to go away. We're willing to sit down with everybody and talk, but nobody's willing to sit down with us. I had our long meeting with Mr. Arne.
I've sat down with you many times. I take offense to that.
You got to let me finish. Rhonda, that's my wife.
I am not your wife, sir.
I've sat down with you for an hour and spoken. It's time to get this thing done. Y'all got a long summer ahead of you.
Thank you.
We're going to be here until it's done. Mr. Cleary?
We don't take kindly to threats, Randy, so please, watch yourself.
I'm hung on.
All right. Mr. John Settle's here.
It might take me three minutes to get up here.
We won't start your timer until you're there.
All right, you ready? I'm ready.
All right.
We feel like we've been done wrong on the Veterans Day parade. Y'all know that. We've carried this on and on and on. And this is all done behind closed doors, but it's not over, and we're there for the long haul. Thank you.
Thanks, John. All right, Commissioner Watkins has a motion for executive session.
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics, proposed or pending litigation as permitted by KRS 61.8101C.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.